Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council, including the Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency, scheduled for a 1:00 meeting today. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council, including the Library and Observatory Board.
You didn't have to say it twice.
In case you didn't hear me the first time through. So we'll go on schedule on a 1:00 p.m., May 18th, 2023. So this is the time to begin the meeting with a flag salute, which will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Steve Downs.
Please place your hands over your heart. Ready, begin. I'd like to lead this to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as we are.
Thank you, Steve. We'll now move on to roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Malato?
Present.
Councilmember Marker?
Present.
Councilmember Wile?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Downs?
I'm here.
Mayor Kite?
Here. Thank you. And now I'll keep it with you, Kristi, and we'll move on to the non-agenda public comments.
Okay. The first speaker card I have is Brad Anderson.
Thank you very much. My name is Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Rancho Mirage for over 20 years now. So I just wanted to talk about several things, but I'm just going to concentrate. I noticed on many of my streets in my neighborhood that I have what apparently are license plate readers. But there are more than that. I understand that they can actually detect movement and detect what type of car. So I think they're very, very invasive and very, very ugly, and they don't add to the beauty of the city at all. And I understand that. I don't remember a decision being based on that. I'm sure they cost a lot of money because I noticed you have them painted, or the city, or the county, whoever put them in store, have them painted in private properties, too. And the height of them would be, I can go through many ways or reasons why you shouldn't have so many of them. They're very invasive, and, to me, anyway, knowing I'm suspected of doing something all the time now from the city, or from the county, or the Riverside County Police. So I'm just absolutely opposed to the number that we have and the locations of them. I understand this is an issue, and it's not going to go away, but also I just want to remind the City Council, that's really a two-way street. I know, I probably should say, but the last three years, or two years at least, the city building here apparently was under COVID restrictions and were closed on Fridays. And I took the time to actually monitor a lot of that, especially Fridays, because that's casual day, and nobody gets dressed up or even comes to work. So that's something I'm going to release eventually. And just a whole bunch of other things, not that it has anything to do with this, which really does because your city attorney sits on that legal counsel for the Palm Springs Cemetery District, where I was denied access the other day to this public meeting for some policies about mask-wearing that they only can have, anyway, and the remote meeting access didn't work either. And then yesterday, you had your city council meeting here in a break room, or in one of the boardrooms or meeting rooms, special meeting. And I see no reason that you would have a special meeting being kind of secretly unannounced. Why would it that be able to wait until your next meeting? Or not this meeting, but the next city council meeting? But anyway, that's what I'm going to speak about on that, because it's not all positive like I just talked about. So thank you very much.
The next speaker is Wally Melendez.
Good afternoon, City Council, Administration, and we, the people of Rancho Mirage. When you walk around this jurisdiction of Rancho Mirage like today, you absolutely burn up. You're literally burning up. And you're looking for shade. You're looking for a tree. You're looking for water. Looking for grass. You're looking for air, and you don't find any. You're choking with heat on a sideline. I'd like to say this. The advertising companies make such a pretty picture of the Coachella Valley, well, they're only talking about the gated communities, not the real world. So that's why I brought up the subject of Rancho Mirage having its own university. Because we need people to know about trees. The study of trees is called what? Dendrology. It almost sounds like dendruff. So the city of Rancho Mirage needs its own university. We need trees, not any kind of trees, shade trees, arboles de sombra, for we, the people, the gated communities, they got their own trees, they got their own grass, they got their own golf courses. But we, the people, can't afford those gated communities. Dendrology, the study of trees. Let's get with it. We need shade. We need fresh air. We need to take care of our environment and do away with the gasoline cars, especially the European cars. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bruce Martinez.
Don't worry, those cameras are all pointed at me. So anyways, I'd like to address an important issue, and it's an ADA issue. So I don't know if any of you know what the purpose of the ADA is, and if you do, could you speak up? So the purpose of the ADA is to put forth a plan for a person that is disabled without a limb, or can't hear or see, to provide a clear path to success. So here in Rancho Mirage, I have to go to Palm Springs, we have to go to Indio, La Quinta, to receive any help. And as all of you know, you know, I have issues sometimes. And it's hard to live with every day. You know, it's a struggle. Sometimes I don't like being me. But how about 25 phone numbers here, and 760 number that I've called for help? I've been given lots of pamphlets. What we need is real-time action. I mean, in my neighborhood, I live on Chappelle, right off of DeVal. I believe there was a policeman killed by a man with a knife. And that's a pretty posh neighborhood. There are multimillion-dollar houses there. So this is a very important issue that we need to address. I'm nobody's hero. I'm only advocating for myself. But you guys are other people's heroes. You know what I'm saying? And it's, I, you know, I had a friend whose mom and dad are celebrities, and he was living with me for a couple of years. His name is Harrison Wagner, and you can look his name up. His parents set a trust fund up for him, and he died in North Hollywood of a fentanyl overdose. So we've got a crisis, and a lot of times PTSD is a condition, you know, it happens to us, and we don't have any control over it. And so a lot of times, these are conditions to things that happen to us, you know, if we go into war, if we get beaten, if we get molested. There are many aspects to dysfunction. And I know dysfunctional people when I see them. I know dysfunctional behavior when I see it, because I'm dysfunctional. And psychiatrists and psychologists write books about people like me. And sometimes I don't show my side of me that's intellectual. Oh, sorry. My time is up. But you guys get what I'm saying, right? So this is an issue Rancho Mirage can please, you know, address. So everybody here has had moments, you know, I'm sure, in our families, but I shouldn't have to go to Palm Springs or anywhere else to receive help. So, thanks.
Thank you for your input today.
That was the last speaker card. Is there anyone else in the audience who did not submit a speaker card, who would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? That was the last comment.
Thank you, Kristi. The next section of the meeting today has to do with the individual council and the comments that they might have. So I'd like to start with Councilmember Malato, and see if you have any comments today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, some brief comments, if I may, please. The Riverside County Sheriff's Department is having an ice cream social hosted by Ben and Jerry's on Wednesday, May 31st, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And the public is invited to come and meet your sheriff's department staff, officers, community service officers, dispatchers. And those gatherings are usually very, very nice to attend. Also, our Rancho Mirage citizens on patrol, they're now recruiting. And the citizens on patrol are a vital aspect of our community. They help with patrolling the community, report public nuisance to code compliance, they report suspicious activity to the sheriff's department, assist disabled motorists, and they support the city at major events. There are boots on the ground, our eyes and ears, and they are a valued contribution to our community. If you're interested in joining and volunteering the citizens on patrol, please call City Hall. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll move on to Mayor Pro Tem Downs. Do you have any comments?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things I wanted to talk about, things that occurred while I was vacationing recently. So one is the finish-up of Wolfson Park. And since I returned from vacation, I've taken time to walk through the park and take a look at what a great job Public Works did in the updates to Wolfson Park. So thank you to Ryan of the Public Works Department. For those of you who don't know a lot about the park, you might take time to walk through it. It's a gem of a park. And if you don't know much about Michael Wolfson, or the history of the park, in the center pedestrian entry to the park, there is a pedestal with a red button on top. And there's another famous former Rancho Mirage resident who will speak to you. There is a recording if you push that button, and it'll give you some of the background of Michael Wolfson, who he was, what he did for this city, and the park, and a little bit of the background of the city. So pretty interesting, if you take a walk through the park, to push that button and hear Frank Sinatra talk a little bit about the history of Rancho Mirage. The other thing that I wanted to speak to, Mr. Mayor, is the automated license plate readers that were approved in recent weeks, and they are in the process of implementation, or at least installation now. And so the reason, of course, that we have installed these license plate readers, and by the way, they are exactly what they sound like, they are automated license plate readers. These are not speed trap cameras. These cameras do not capture, they aren't facial recognition capturing cameras, they capture license plates, and they help our sheriff's department that protects us do a better job of protecting us. And our sheriff's department tells us that this is one of the most important crime-fighting tools that they have. So why would we do this? Why do we, why is it important for us to make sure that we approve these kinds of requests from the sheriff's department? It's because of the crime statistics in our city. For years, the crime statistics in our city have shown that violent crime, things like robbery, things like homicides, are lower than average. But property crime, things like burglaries and vehicle thefts, are a little bit higher than average. So it's important for us to do something about that. Now, why are our property crime numbers a little higher than average? I think it's fairly simple. The median home price in the city of Rancho Mirage is significantly higher than the rest of the, than the average for the Coachella Valley. The median household income in Rancho Mirage is significantly higher than the rest of the Coachella Valley. And it's also the case that we have a larger number of second homes in Rancho Mirage than is average for the Coachella Valley. So what we have are a lot of expensive homes, filled with a lot of expensive stuff, that are vacant, or not occupied for a good portion of the year. What does that mean? It means that for a burglar, we are a target-rich environment. So it's important for us to take steps to protect our citizens, and to do things like that which the sheriff's department has requested we do, which is to install these automated license plate readers. So thank you to the sheriff's department for making that request. I'm glad that the implementation, or the installation of those license plate readers is going on, because it helps make us a better and a safer city for the residents of Rancho Mirage. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Very, very strong support of this program. At this time, let's see if Councilmember Wile, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. This is our last meeting before the Memorial Day weekend. So I would like to comment, Memorial Day is extremely important. It's important to all of us. It's a day that we honor those that gave their lives for providing us the freedom that we enjoy today. It's time to reflect on how fortunate we are to live here in this marvelous environment. There will be a wreath that's placed a week from Monday, Monday, on the Tomb of the Unknowns, which is done every year. You know, one of my favorite expressions for Memorial Day that I looked at again the other day, and it says, "America without her soldiers would be like God without his angels." And that's so true, because these are the true heroes. These are the people that made the ultimate sacrifice for our benefit. And I just can't thank you enough for any of you that are veterans out in the audience. I salute you. Thank you, Bill. I salute all veterans, and I hope you'll join me at the memorial at our community park a week from Monday. I always go down there for Memorial Day weekend. The other thing is that I think it's important to comment that we should remember the lasting memory of these individuals and the sacrifice that they made, and they should be honored forever, not just on Memorial Day, but forever. So it's a wonderful, wonderful holiday coming up. The fact that we're not going to be in session here at City Hall, and this being our last council meeting prior to Memorial Day, I just felt it appropriate to give a salute on this particular day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Very, very good report. At this point, I'd like to ask Councilmember Marker, if she has a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Wile, thank you for those incredibly kind words, and I echo those. Thank you to all who have served in our armed forces, and let us remember and never forget what they have done for our country.
Okay. Thank you. I will not have a comment today, so we'll move on to the city manager comment. Isaiah, do you have any comments today?
Yeah, just one. And there's a video that Kai made to go along with it. So, you know, public safety is definitely our top priority here, and it's something that the council takes very seriously, it's something that your staff takes very seriously. And, you know, just from my own perspective, it's always very tough, you know, when we are hearing from a resident that was victimized. And it's extremely uncomfortable, even when there's no harm to anyone's physical body, but there's always the emotional side effects that go along with being victimized. And the question that we always get is, what are you doing to help prevent this? And so we're in the position to have to answer those questions and be responsive to our community. And so like Mayor Pro Tem Downs mentioned, the council did expand our automated license plate reader program. And really, when we talk to the public safety professionals, our law enforcement, they can't stress the use of this system enough on what a tool it is to help protect our community. So what I'd like to do is play a video that's how, that will be housed on our city website. So if you go to the public safety page on the city's website, you'll get access to this video. But I want to go ahead and play it today, because I think that, you know, it's totally okay and appropriate to ask questions when you see what look like video cameras going up all over the city. So as we've mentioned, they are not recording video. It's not a live feed. So this video that our law enforcement put together just explains the system a little bit, and this will be on the website. So if we get any inquiries, or somebody just wants to go find out more about, hey, what are these, you know, why would cities do this, or why would local government do this, it just explains a little bit more about the program. So Jason, let's go ahead and roll the video.
Over 70% of crimes involve a vehicle, but without a license plate, we can't identify the suspect. These cameras are the missing link, providing us with license plate information to help us solve crimes, take people in custody, and make the community safer. I'm Deputy Early with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, assigned to the Rancho Mirage Special Enforcement Team. The city of Rancho Mirage has partnered with Flock Safety, implementing numerous public safety cameras throughout the city. These public safety cameras collect license plate data. This information helps law enforcement proactively protect residents, businesses, visitors, and their property. Additionally, these public safety cameras help with locating wanted violent persons and at-risk, missing adults and juveniles. Some of the recent examples and success stories we've had with the Flock technology in our surrounding cities, we had a shooting in Los Angeles, and we were able to track the suspect here to a city nearby in Cathedral City. We also had a robbery that occurred in the city of Palm Desert, and thanks to assistance of the automated license plate reader system, we're able to track the suspects to the city of Hemet and take them into custody in less than two hours. This data is only accessible by law enforcement, and the Flock system requires a police report number as justification to access the system. All Flock inquiries are routinely audited to assure the system is not being abused. Flock and other public safety cameras are currently utilized in over 22 cities within Riverside County, and hundreds of cities throughout the nation. The city of Rancho Mirage has already been utilizing similar public safety cameras in the city since 2014. This technology does not use facial recognition, does not record video, and it does not track you. For further information regarding this product, refer to Flock Safety's website, or Flock Safety's YouTube channel, on which they provide information and success stories with their products. This system allows law enforcement to better solve crime, locate suspects, and make this community overall more safe, secure, and victimize less people.
Thank you for that, Jason. So, you know, I just want to thank our law enforcement for the great job that they do day in and day out to protect us. And, you know, I think it's important to provide them with the access to technology that they need to be more efficient within their function. And, you know, a couple of the highlights that I'm just going to repeat out of that video is, you know, the system is only accessed by law enforcement, and there's a log, and they have to be actively investigating a case, and those logs are reviewed and monitored as part of that process. And then there's 28 cities in Riverside County, 22 of them use this type of technology. And we've had this type of technology in our city since 2014. It's just this is an expansion of that system that we've been utilizing. And one of the things that is very relevant is, you know, they referenced some cases, you know, people in Cathedral City, or something that happened in Palm Desert, but many times how this plays out is you have a small number of people that are victimizing over and over again. And so if you prevent a burglary in Rancho Mirage, you're likely going to prevent that suspect from victimizing another person in Palm Desert, or someone else within our own community. So what you find is, you know, a lot of times, it's people that are doing this all over, and they do not respect city boundaries. So if we do a better job in our community, that makes everyone else around us safe, and same thing for the other cities. We work very closely together with the Cove communities on law enforcement, and this type of technology is in all three of the Cove communities. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Look forward to the future and see the results that this program will have on our crime prevention.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Lieutenant Rick Espinoza is in the gallery today. So thank you, Lieutenant, for the work that you and your team do. By the way, for those of you who aren't aware, Lieutenant Espinoza leads the team that protects us in the city of Rancho Mirage. So thank you for asking us to do this job of giving this important crime-fighting tool to you and your team.
We thank you for supporting us and helping us protect the citizens here.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. The next agenda item is the consent calendar, and I'll ask Isaiah to present the consent calendar and to handle any public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have three items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to approve the May 4th, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Item number two is to approve contracts. Item number three are to approve demands, and I'll hand this over to the city clerk to take any public comment.
I did not receive any speaker cards on any of the consent calendar items. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any of the items number one through three? And there are no comments.
Okay. Thank you. We need to have a motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I have a request. I see a lot of our fantastic commissioners in the audience, and that is the last item on the agenda today. So unless there's an objection, I would like to consider the commission appointments next, in the interest of time.
Okay. Certainly do that.
Kristi, will you please do the staff report?
Okay. So, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. As you know, the city annually seeks volunteers to serve on its boards and commissions. Beginning in mid-March, the city clerk's office issued a notice inviting applications for the one-year term beginning June 1st. The notice was published twice in the Desert Sun newspaper, included in several city e-blasts. It was also posted at City Hall, at the library, and on the city's website. Applications received are on file in my office. Copies of all applications were promptly provided to the city council for review and consideration. Each council member provided me with their nominations, which shall be confirmed by a majority vote of the council. In a moment, I will read your nominations for all 12 boards and commissions. You may make one motion to confirm the entire slate of appointments. Any nomination requiring further consideration may be pulled from the slate for separate action. Are there any questions before I read the slate of nominations?
You can proceed, please.
Okay. So Architectural Review Board nominees are John Mylander, John Greenwood, Andrew Dick, Tom Dozy, Gene Reniker, Narendra Patel, and Lance O'Donnell. Community Cultural Commission nominees are Kayla Pressman, Michael O'Keefe, Sally Trademan, Donna Mal nominees are Kayla Pressman, Michael O'Keefe, Sally Trademan, Donna Malouf, and Frank Farino. Community Emergency Preparedness Commission nominees are David Richardson, Caprice Lennonin, Kirk Dandridge, Tonya Hyams, Mary Lou Suter, and Technical Advisor Katie Stice. Community Parks and Trails Commission nominees are Tim Esser, Dennis Constant, Warren Schneider, Eric Wright, and Fred Struk. Historic Preservation Commission nominees are Carol Leibowitz, Frank Lopez, Christian Braun, Craig Trapein, and Ray Keller. Housing Commission nominees are Jennifer Caridi, Isaiah Harris, Scott Newton, Lee Jenison, Darrell Mulvaill, and Mary Bundy. Library and Observatory Advisory Commission nominees are Ron Treat, Donald Stein, Don Summa, Lois Reese, Steve Ezer, and Technical Advisor Patrick Lambright. Library and Observatory Foundation Board nominees are Allison Zoltizziak, Lucy Tagmire, Christine Hughes, Leslie Uso, Patrice Merritt, Robert Moon, James Soa, Gary Galton, and Mayor Kite also serves on that commission on that board. Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission nominees are Marlene Marie Casetta, Mike Renner, Gary Jones, Diane Lynn, Jay Wilson, and Stan Markowitz. Planning Commission nominees are Murray Bryant, David Gray, Mark Curran, Pamela Chanter, and Jason Agostini. Speaker Series Commission nominees are Eric Cunningham, Samir Kana, Robert Berg, and Mary Yoshioka. And Traffic Safety Commission nominees are Sidney Burks, Michael Ziskind, Stephen Shuey, Owen McIntosh, Dell Smith, Sheriff Sergeant Don Olson, and COPS Captain Alfonso Carpenter. That completes the list of nominations, and any vacancies remaining will be considered at a future meeting. So-
Okay, thank you very much. Yes.
Go ahead and do public comments if you'd like.
Please.
I did not receive any speaker cards regarding this item, but is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on the commission appointments? Okay.
Hello, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage, and I assumed I did a speaker card, so I apologize if that wasn't processed correctly. My issue with this is, I looked in the public record. You have no names listed at all. There's nothing there. There was nothing to look at concerning the applicants that were applying. And I noticed on the staff report today, or the staff, I guess it is the staff report, apparently there's no term limits either. That's an issue because I know a lot of these people are re- not that they don't do a job that they a good job that they they perform for the city, but we need we need fresh eyes on everything in the city, I believe. And having the same people serve over and over and over and over and over doesn't acquire doesn't doesn't help the city. It really stagnates the city. Not that everybody stagnates the city. I don't want everybody hating me today. But I just I think that's very important that the staff report or the the public record, did it list anybody? Did it list any of the names of anybody for the applicants? And so I had nothing to look at. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? That is the last comment.
Okay, that was the last public comment. I now have four council comments.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a comment that we are most indebted and appreciative of everyone that volunteers to serve on a commission. We thank you. You know, you're the eyes and ears of an extension of the city council. People that serve do it out of dedication for the city, for the same reason that those of us on this dais that sit here. We do it because we care for the city. And so you folks are so critically important. You work tirelessly, and you're the folks that make the city that much better. And I can't begin to thank you enough because we hear it all the time. And we are the beneficiaries of your accolades. So thank you very much for volunteering, and I congratulate each and every person that has been nominated today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Any other council comments?
I do. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo Ted's comments. Thank you so much to all of you who are here today, who serve on our various commissions. It certainly is the case that those of you who serve on our commissions, this is volunteered time. And I guess one one way for us to think about volunteered time, while you're not compensated with money, you're certainly compensated emotionally for the work that you do for the city. And I think another way to look at the work that you do for the city is, the work that you do is priceless. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And just to acknowledge you that are here today, if you're one of the appointed people, would you stand? Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you over the next year. Should be an excellent year for commissions and the council. Okay, we will now move on to-
Can we need a motion?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Need a motion in a second?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the nominees as read by the city clerk for all of the positions so named.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations again.
If you would like to leave at this point, you certainly can. We'd like to have you stay if you can also. Pardon me?
Go back to item four, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, thank you, and we'll go on to public hearing, item number four. This is environmental assessment case number EA 22-0003, tentative track map case number TTM 22-0002, TTM number 38222. The applicant is Bravo Holdings, and I'd like to have Pivar Lopez come up. Pilar, I'm sorry. Pilar, quote-
You got it. Yep, Pilar.
Pilar, okay. I'm sorry. Pilar Lopez, I'm sorry, Senior Planner. And so would you review the report, please?
Thank you, Mayor Kite, and good afternoon, city council. I have for your consideration environmental assessment case number EA 22-0003, and tentative track map case number TTM 22-0002, TTM 38222, a residential subdivision request from Bravo Properties LLC. The proposed project will subdivide an existing 10.12 acre parcel into eight single-family residential lots and three lettered lots for common areas that include the private cul-de-sac street, one landscape retention basin, and a landscape parkway fronting Vista del Sol. At this time, there is no vertical residential development being proposed with this request. The subject site is located along the east side of Vista del Sol, just east of Eisenhower Medical Center and west of Vista Dunes Road. The subject site is an undeveloped vacant parcel. Approximately 90 linear feet on the southernmost portion is paved due to the street improvements from the Betty Ford Center. The remainder of Vista del Sol immediately adjacent to the property is unpaved. A condition of approval will require the applicant to provide street improvements subject to the Public Works Director's approval, which will include paving to extend to at least four feet west of the center line in the existing road easement, so there is a minimum of a 24-foot travelway. The proposed project would convert vacant undeveloped land to eight single-family home lots. The project would be compatible with the size, scale, and aesthetic features of the other existing single-family homes located to the east of the project site. The proposed project will subdivide the existing 10.12 acre lot into eight single-family residential lots and three lettered lots. The common areas will include a private cul-de-sac street, Bravo Dreams Lane, and one landscape retention basin, and a landscape parkway fronting Vista del Sol. The neighborhood around the parcel is residential estate, which will be similar to what is proposed. The residential subdivision will be gated similar to the other residential subdivisions in the vicinity. Access to the proposed parcels will be provided by the private cul-de-sac street off Vista del Sol. The proposed residential parcels range in size from 43,564 square feet to 53,881 square feet, for an overall project density of 0.79 units per acre, which complies with the maximum density of one dwelling unit under the RE zoning district. The proposed lots all meet and exceed the minimum width, depth, size, and density that is required for the residential estate zoning district. The onsite drainage will consist of the design storm runoff tributary from the onsite paved access road in individual residential lots. The preliminary project design for the access road will include a curb and gutter, two storm drain inlets, and an underground storm drain system intended to convey collected storm runoff to an on-site surface retention basin located at the easterly end of the project site. Per the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, Section 17.24.040, trees must be planted at a rate of at least one tree for every 30 linear feet of street frontage. The project site has approximately 600 linear feet frontage of Vista del Sol, which requires a minimum of 20 shade trees. The applicant proposes a total of 36 fruitless olives at an approximate rate of 25 linear feet, and are interspliced with 28 date palms. This meets and exceeds the parkway requirement. The subdivision entrance will include decorative pavers and a water feature to welcome residents. The pavers will be an off-gray color to complement the white and slate gray block walls. An environmental assessment application was submitted for the subject eight-lot subdivision, and the determination was made that the project required an initial study. An initial study has been prepared, resulting in the recommendation to adopt a mitigated negative declaration. Mitigation measures were recommended for biological resources, cultural resources, and tribal cultural resources. To date, staff has not received any public comment. At the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting on April 27, 2023, the Planning Commission recommended that the city council, one, approve the filing of a mitigated negative declaration based on environmental assessment case number EA 22-0003. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15168 and 2, approve tentative track map case number TTM 22-002, TTM 38222, subject to the conditions of approval, and based on the content and findings in the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and staff and the applicant's representative is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, the city clerk will take any public testimony.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Brad Anderson.
Thank you again, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. I just wanted to make a few points. It's a good thing that a lot of the city improvements over there in that area were taking place before this development moved in. But my issue, I guess, not that long ago, but quite a while ago, the city council stated, well, a city council person stated that there was they were drawing back gated communities in the City of Rancho Mirage. And I thought that was very odd because that's it was a development next to my home. And I think it inflicted with property rights of this council member. But so that's something odd. And I guess I guess really, I just want to bring attention to how real estate in that area has been sold, and then easements taken off, and then internet added, and other things prior to this, including the Betty Ford issue. So I don't want to say it's who you know in the city, but it probably would help to get developments like this through. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the only speaker card submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on number four but did not submit a speaker card? That was the only speaker.
Okay, so we'll go to the council for comments.
Mayor, I have a question. Pilar, the plans for this house, these houses are, if I'm not mistaken, very similar to Bravo's development on La Paz. Very similar design and size. Is that is that accurate?
So at this point, there's no vertical development being proposed. If at a future date, the applicant submits plans for the homes themselves, staff will review them. They could be subject to an SB9 review, or they could be subject to a preliminary development plan, depending on what the applicant submits.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
So just to be sure, all we're asked to do is to approve the track map at this point?
Correct. That's the only request.
But I believe, frankly, in my conversations with the developer, those of you that are familiar with Bravo's development on La Paz, that turned out to be very attractive. I believe you'll find that the the development will be very similar.
Thank you. Other comments from the council? Could I have a motion, please?
I'll go ahead and make the motion that the council approve the filing of a mitigated negative declaration based on environmental assessment case number EA 22-0003, and pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15168. And number two, approve tentative track map case number TTM 22-002, TTM 38222, subject to the conditions of approval, and based on the content and findings in the staff report.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. There's motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the next item, item number five, which is a temporary use permit, case number TUP 23-0014. And this is for the consideration for a helicopter to land on and use the roof of the River Shopping Center. And I'll turn this over to Leslie Vasquez, who is Assistant Planner, to present the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Kite. Good afternoon, Mayor and city council members. I have for your consideration a request from AES Mechanical Services Group, Incorporated, for a temporary helicopter landing and takeoff site located at the River 71800, Highway 111, proposed to take place on Monday, June 5, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The helicopter landing and takeoff site is located within the River Shopping Center parking lot. Per the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, Section 08.25.020, no person shall land any aircraft within the city unless the location is approved by the city council. Staff received a temporary use permit to replace the air conditioning units and for the temporary construction staging areas, which will be finalized based on city council's determination for a helicopter landing. Preparation for the lift will begin on Thursday, June 1, 2023, and will end on Tuesday, June 6, 2023. On the lift day, Monday, June 5, the units located in the upper right unit storage area will be moved to the staging area to prep for the helicopter lift at 7:00 a.m. The staging area will be used to load and unload the units on the helicopter. The helicopter will land in the middle of the northeast parking lot, as indicated in the FAA approved plan. The 45 AC units are for the Cinemark Theater Suite, which is located in the center of the river, and there are access constraints. These units have not been replaced since the river was built in 1999, which is approximately 24 years. The units are not reachable with a standard crane due to the building's location. The helicopter will make approximately 90 trips, which is two trips per unit. All areas- All areas outlined in red will be cleared from 7:00 a.m. to 7:30 a.m. The first evacuation plan will include the River Shopping Center and the post office. The orange security icons show where security will be present. Security will be located at each entry walk point to ensure no members of the non-participating public enter the area. In order to ensure that the post office remains open during normal business hours, the operation will focus first on the six units closest to the post office, which will involve removing the old units and dropping new units on the Cinemark rooftop. At no point will the helicopter land on the roof, it will remain hovering as crews load and unload. After 7:30 a.m., the post office will be removed from the evacuation plan. USPS workers can resume their normal business hours, which opens to the public at 8:00 a.m. Patrons can park in the northwest parking lot and access the post office during the helicopter lift. The Rancho Mirage postmaster has provided an approval letter consenting to the evacuation and overall lift day activities. From 7:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., the River Shopping Center will remain cleared while the helicopter continues its operation. The helicopter will make approximately 90 trips, which is two trips per unit. The helicopter will continue the cycle but move to a different portion of the roof. The white box labeled AR shows the attached release point that was completed while the post office was evacuated. The helicopter will have four new attached release points on the roof and two new attached release points in the unit staging area, which is shown in yellow. The cycle will continue until all 45 units have been replaced. Once the helicopter is done flying, the tenants can return back to the building, and the river will be open to the public at approximately 12:00 p.m. The old slash existing units will remain in the unit storage area until Tuesday, June 6. At 10:00 a.m., several trucks will haul away the old units, and the parking lot will be restored to its normal slash use function. Public meeting notices were sent to property owners within a 500-foot radius on May 8th, 2023. Staff has not received any public comments for the request. Staff recommends that the City Council consider approval of the location for a helicopter landing and use at the river located at 71800, Highway 111, on Monday, June 5th, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. by AES Mechanical Services Group, Incorporated. That concludes the presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent report. Is that your first report with-
Yes, it is.
With Rancho Mirage, you've done an excellent job.
Thank you.
Any comments from, we need public comments?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker card submitted, Brad Anderson.
Thank you again, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. Actually, I am opposed to this, so that means the city council will vote for it, so. But anyway, no, it's just, the city council complained before about fireworks at Morningside, which has been taking place forever, and, and they mentioned that the next time, they won't approve it. So, to use this, it's just as offensive as fireworks to neighbor and dogs, PSDD, as we talked about before, whatever that is, I'm sorry, not to make light of that, but so the noise and disruption of services, and it's just, for a private business that I happen to know that city council members have influence over, or had influence over before, it's concerning, and so I would be all opposed to this, no, no way I would ever vote for it, because you got all those new license plate readers, and we want, we don't want people sneaking in from the air, we want them to drive in, and that's, I'm joking, of course, but, no, I'm opposed to this, thank you.
That was the only speaker card. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item? And that was the only comment.
Okay, thank you. Council comments? Do I have anybody interested in-
The only comment I have, Mr. Mayor, is that Leslie, you sounded like an old hand making that presentation, so thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a comment that I think it's, it's great and encouraging to see the improvements that are going on at the river. Here, this is, again, equipment that is, you know, over 20 years old, that's being replaced, and when you see what's going on right now with the improvements of Dave and Buster's, which is, of course, the former space of Aqua Pazza and the contiguous space, that it's very exciting. I think that we are looking at a renaissance for the river in the coming year. So with that in mind, I'm, I'm very enthused and look forward to passing this particular request. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, can we have a motion, please?
I'll be happy to do that, and, and I'll make a motion that the city council approve the location for a helicopter landing and use at the river located at 71800, Highway 111, on Monday, June 5th, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. by AES Mechanical Services Group, Inc.
And I'll second.
There's a motion in a second, please vote.
Council member marker, could you try your vote one more time? Thank you. And motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. That was the last item on the agenda. Now turning the meeting over to Steve Quintanilla, our city attorney, to summarize the closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council is now going to recess in a closed session pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9D1, regarding the following pending litigation matters. Vacation rental owners and neighbors of Rancho Mirage et al. versus City of Rancho Mirage, vacation rental owners and neighbors of Rancho Mirage versus City of Rancho Mirage, Wendy Heck, Wendy Hope Heckman versus City of Rancho Mirage, and we have a case here where we don't specify the names since disclosure would jeopardize pending settlement negotiations. The council will also meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9D4, regarding one potential initiation of litigation item. And that concludes our-
Mr. Mayor, before we recess in closed session, we do have a request to speak on the closed session calendar by Brad Anderson. Brad, one up.
Thank you once again, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. I just wanted to speak on all the private closed session items. I think, especially the Heckman case, number three, I believe, I think everybody needs to look into that, that, because that's a total overreach from the city, as far as I'm concerned, of, I guess, policy, that's been used at a lot of the other special districts. But it seems like status quo with the city. Again, I just want to emphasize, hopefully, no retaliation actions would take against me or my private property in the city for speaking at this podium today. But I fear, because of these actions against city residents, against property owners, against the people that support this, this dais and its members, that you will be, I guess, faster than I am speaking about this, taking care of this matter. I talked about ethics before, of how I thought maybe ethics were not being applied, and I'm kind of convinced that they aren't, so, and, and we have a city council that apparently, I guess, is, is not capable of doing their mission, and they should maybe decide to maybe leave the dais or leave their position voluntarily, before notice is, I guess, before a lot of people notice it. So, anyway, I'm going to leave you alone. Thank you very much. Goodbye.
With that item, we will now recess to closed session. Okay, so we're going to reconvene to an open session, and Steve?
There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Okay, so the closed session announcements have been made, and we will now adjourn the meeting.